hearing on May 1st, 2025. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Good evening, all. Thank you. Welcome to our final public hearing. I have a couple, Agenda Item 3 is just an overview for the public online. We do have a couple of people online and we have one person in public. So I'm going to share. That's what I was hoping for. Great. Before I start, I want to, I want to give a big thank you to all the commissioners that served on the Charter Revision Commission with me. First off, my name's Chris Dewitt. I was elected chairman and proud to have served with this, this team of commissioners since October of 2024. And I'd like to go down the table here and just introduce everyone. On my left is Commissioner McEnery, Commissioner Blanco to my left, my vice chairman, Commissioner Treshick, my secretary, Commissioner Wackerman, Commissioner Hoag at the end, and Commissioner McCann is not here this evening. But without everyone sitting at these tables tonight, this work doesn't get done. And I very much appreciate all your inputs. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Just a couple, just a couple of charts here. So we started out this session, and if you were at the very first session, we said, what are our objectives? And there were really two. The first one was to thoughtfully address all, all taxpayer comments and inputs. The town IT director put up a website for us, and the community had 24/7, 365-day access since, I think it was October 25th of 2024, to give any comments that, that they'd like. And all of the comments that were, that were levied through the website were addressed here. Commissioner Treshick did a wonderful job of cataloging every input and making sure that we kept, we kept track of, of every input. Our second objective was to deliver a draft charter revision that could pass a townwide referendum. So last Thursday, was it? I think, I'm losing my days a little bit. We moved a draft charter revision forward, which is required to be done. Oh, and Commissioner McCann's here. We're an entire group. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm late.
No problem. We moved the draft charter revision forward, and that was required for us to have this meeting this evening. And that, that charter revision was on our website since last Thursday, and hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to review and make further comments. Good evening. So, you know, what will you see? If you've looked at the charter revision in, in big chunks, there are some really important things here. One, you will see an increased focus on ethics. You'll see a, this is from, kind of the Delta changes from the original, from the original charter. There's new focus on ethics committees. There's new focus on an ethics ordinance that's being worked on with the, the RTM right now. Very important addition to the charter. And when you review the charter, I hope you'll, you'll, you'll notice that, you'll notice that revision. I think you'll also notice a strengthened checks and balances and good government practices. There's a lot of small things that were included in here that I thought were very, very important. One of them was our, our town, our internal auditors. Our internal auditor, the chain of command was, was, was not really defined very well. And given some of the, some of the issues that have plagued our town in the last couple of years, we thought it was very important that that chain of command be very specifically addressed. That's just one of the things that, that are checks in. But please feel free to come out front if you'd like.
I know, I'm a little crowded, but.
I think you, I think you'd also see an increased focus on ensuring town operations are effective. So what does that mean? There were many town department head inputs that talked about how can we be more effective in meetings? How can we be more efficient? Especially, now, and this kind of lapses into the next one, but especially with our Water Pollution Control Authority, right? There were not a lot of checks and balances there. There were not a lot of, was not a lot of specific direction, and that focus has been added. But specifically, you will see a lot more clarification of water pollution control responsibilities. That was severely lacking. It was a point that was addressed by more than a couple of inputs from the taxpayers. It was an input from the, the first selectman. Language to assist the town in its ability to hire great talent. We, as, as the last Charter Revision Commission addressed, and we addressed, we wanted to make sure that when, when we go to hire people, we hire the right people. And one of the things that the last Charter Revision did, and we thought was a good, was a good addition, and we added it to our revision, is that we pointed every job description back to a, back to the HR director. So today, or after this, this Charter Revision is made, is voted forward, if you want to hire a new Public Works Director, you have to go to the town HR director and pull up a resume, which was not in the charter before. This, this, for me, serves two purposes. One, it forces us to have a, a, a resume for every job on file. And two, it ensures that those resumes are clear and defined, and that we hire the right people with the right prerequisites. And frankly, I think we've overall, we've modernized the charter. We, we have. There's some, we, we were, what we didn't want to do was take a 47-page document, turn it into a 200-page document. We wanted to strip out some of the things that were old and replace it with, with modern references to state statutes and, and other things within the town. So during your review, and I hope you all review the document, you, you'll notice all those things. And I cannot stress enough, all of these inputs were from taxpayer, town leadership, and town employee inputs. We did not create any of this stuff on our own. This was all from inputs that people had specified for us, including the first selectman, Board of Selectmen, and the town clerk specifically. And again, thank you to, to my commission. They're listed up here. That's it. I did not want to spend a ton of time giving a big overview, but thank you for listening. And I'm going to stop sharing. So I will move to Agenda Item 4, which is public comment, which is the reason we're here tonight. So public comment is usually just that, it's comment. We don't have a lot of people here today, so I think we can be a little bit loose with our, our procedure. So I won't hold you to three minutes or anything like that. But normally, what, what we're, what we ask about is, is to make comments, not, this isn't really a question and answer session. If there is a specific question, and so few people, we'd be happy to address it. But normally, the, the question, it's, it's a comment session, not a, not a question and answer session. And you know what? Before I do that, let me open the, let me open the floor to any commissioner if they'd like to say a few words before we start.
I would just like to thank our chair for getting us to this point in, in this manner, and Eric for keeping us so organized. So really appreciate the two of you considerably, and our secretary for doing her jam on the redlining.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hoag. That's very nice of you.
I'd just like to echo Commissioner Wackman. It's been an unbelievable pleasure working with all of you, especially leadership from Chair Dewitt and Chair Treshick. Amazing work. Collaboration was unbelievable. And just from, from my perspective, it's been one of the most transparent processes I've ever seen. You could actually log in 24 hours, seven days a week, answer a question that's going to be articulated in a meaningful way, a way that not only allows you to track the question, but at the same time juxtaposes it with other, with the same grouping. So I just, from that standpoint, I was, it was, it was a really good process. And kudos to the organization. You both have fantastic.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanco.
I just want to say, I know we're in a bigger room than usual, so if everyone could just speak up a little bit.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Sorry. That was my, that's my bad.
And then also just speak out, like, especially if you're reading something. If you go up to present and you're reading, just make sure you're speaking out. And because the mics are the green lights on the ceiling you see there.
Right. So use your big girl, big girl, big boy voices inside. Use your outside voice, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So, okay. Well, I'll entertain any public comment from the people who are here, and then we'll go online. Why don't you like to start, please? So there's a sign-in sheet, if you would, name and address. Just read your name and address to us, please.
I'll sign it afterwards, and I will write it down. My name is Becky Bunnell. My address is 2005.
Oh, how are you? See, we're going to put a lot of faces with names tonight, all right?
So I will try to make these comments versus questions, but the first one is kind of a question, but I'll try to frame it as a comment.
Sure.
I, I was curious to try to understand, as I was reading through your revised charter recommendations, why some commissions are in the charter and some are only in the town code, because I didn't see any rhyme or reason. And the one that in particular struck, struck out to me was the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission, which is, has, was not in the charter, and is still not in the charter. And yet it feels like that's a very important commission to the town. So I guess I, I didn't understand the rationale between, between some commissions being in the charter and some not. So that is a comment. If you would like to answer it, I'd love to know why, but it is, offering that as a comment.
Okay.
Another comment I had was I was actually somewhat disappointed, frankly, to see that the DPW Director did not have to have a E background, licensed background, because I do believe that the way we are rethinking the town, from what I can see, Engineering Department is we are taking staff away from the engineering group, and we are putting them into a new capital, I'm going to say it wrong, capital projects group, with, with the result that we are taking core engineering talent away. And to not have then the DPW Director be an engineer feels like a big miss for a town the size of ours, because virtually all of our projects that we have have a strong engineering component. And I feel like to not have that, right now, our town engineer doesn't always know what's going on because the projects don't report into him. So there is no consistency, and having a high-level engineer would give us that town consistency, because they could be over the project, capital projects and engineering, which right now we, we appear to be separating out. So I feel that is a unfortunate mess for a town our size. Let's just see if I have other comments that are not questions. Thank you for updating the Flood and Erosion Control updates. That is great. I will say that unfortunately, on page three, we actually have the numbers wrong, and it should be seven, not five members and three alternates. So if I could just ask that we make that all change, just to reflect what was actually in the ordinance passed by the RTM. And I did like, I didn't know if this was in there before, but I liked the idea that we're creating stronger bonds between the town and our commissions and boards. On page 43, we talked about each board or commission having a liaison, a formal liaison, which I think, was it there before?
No, it was not there before.
I like that a lot, and I hope that that liaison attends those board and commission meetings and is a core participant, not just a paper liaison, because I really feel like the more we can tie our town departments to our town commissions and boards, the more impactful and effective as a town. So I really liked that a lot. And I didn't finish the whole charter. I apologize. So those are my own comments that I have.
Judy, how dare she come here and not finish the charter?
I may have a few others.
Summary on the site?
What?
We posted a summary on the site. No, you could actually look at the summary to understand what the chief can desire.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay, that would be good.
Get the actual link.
Thank you. I will now sign in. Thank you for your work, though. I do appreciate the work you guys have done. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Yes, Ms. Wackerman, Commissioner Wackerman, sorry.
I'm wondering if I could address the, the comment about the, the commissions being in the charter.
I would love for you to do that, please. Charter versus code, yes, please.
We, we were confused about that at the beginning also. And I, we don't know all the facts, but we, oh, but we do think, hopefully I can be heard. I hope I'm loud enough. We think that some commissions were established in the charter, and then in the 20 years since then, there have been commissions that were statutorily required or were thought of as a good idea, and they can be created by the RTM in an ordinance also. So that was the only way to create them, other than opening the charter and having to put them in. And then we also discussed moving a lot of things out of the charter into ordinances. There's more consistency, but we learned that that's very complicated, because you have to have all the ordinances ready to go, when the charter's ready to go, and it really was something we couldn't do. So there's, so it's going to continue like this, where the commissions are in different places, but they're of equal weight and value. It's just that they were created like statute, so by ordinance. So I think it was, we think that it was because the charter created the open easily, just to create a new permission. So the only way to do it was to do it by ordinance.
So a, a comment might be, is there a way maybe to make a notation in the charter that says these commissions are captured in the code, just so people know when they read the charter that there are a lot more commissions or boards than are actually listed? So it gives people a reference that they can say, oh, I didn't see Solid Waste and Recycling, but I see here you say that that one is one of the ones that's in the code, so I'll go look there.
Talk about that. We'll blank a note of that, right?
Some way to capture something.
Are you, are you all set, Commissioner?
Yes, I am. Thank you for letting me.
So let me, let me give you my answer to code versus charter. I came into this process and addressed to, to, to the commission. I said, I don't understand why there were two different spots as well. So I said, why don't we just take everything out of the code, put it in the charter? And someone said, oh, why don't we just take everything out of the charter and put it into code? Because the code can be changed at any time. So you would think that it would be a lot more flexible, right? And I think one of the things I learned through, through our town attorney and our attorney from, I can't remember the law firm.
Cohen and Wolf.
Cohen and Wolf, thank you very much, Attorney Bushbaum, that there, there's no real difference there, right? So even though you open up the charter, you don't see Solid Waste or Recycling, I mean, we, you know, the code is as valid as the charter. So one of the things that, one of the things that we've formally been using is, is a, is a kind of goal for us is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And this really fell into one of those things. We said, are we going to do any harm by moving everything from the code into the charter? And there was a, there was a pretty healthy discussion around, how would we even do that? Because we would have to move it into the charter, and then we would have to kill, we would have to, you know, for all intent and purpose, the RTM would have to then delete the code, you know? So it was, it was really, going to be really an administrative nightmare. And the town attorney didn't see a tremendous amount of value by, by moving them around. So the good news is the charter and the code really weigh pretty, pretty much the same. It is confusing, I understand. I think putting a reference in the charter to the code might be a little problematic because, you know, we're going to, this is going to pass in November, and then we won't open it up for 10 years, for our recommendation. We've added a recommendation here that we do a 10-year review, right? Every 10 years is reviewed. So for 10 years, someone will be looking at this line that says, go see the code for Solid Waste and Recycling, when two years from now, it might go away. So we don't want to put anything in here that could potentially change. Now, maybe there could be a reference to additional commissions, go see the code, or, I don't know. You know, it might be an interesting point to ask the town attorney if we should put some basic reference to the code, just as a, so we'll, we'll take that, take that under advisement. Anyone else want to comment on that? I'd like to comment on the second one, which was your comment about your disappointment that Department of Public Works Director is no longer a professional engineer. That is absolutely not true. So what we've done, rather than memorializing it in the charter, we say, you have to go to the Human Resources Director and go pull a resume.
But we did.
Job description.
Job description, sorry, job description.
And it's not there.
And it can be added. So we can lobby the, the, uh, human, we, Human Rights and Resources Director to make that a prerequisite.
Who can lobby?
Anybody can lobby. We can, we can have that discussion externally. The problem is when you memorialize it in the charter, you can change it. So we can make the resume for the Human Resources Director or any, any job, job description. Why do I keep seeing resume? Job description. We can manipulate them any way we want. So we have not, we have not taken that requirement out. We've just pushed it back to a job description. That can be changed much easier than the charter. Now, we, to, just to let you know, we did memorialize that the town engineer has to be a professional engineer. Now, the other thing I want to be very clear about, because
The town engineer, huh?
No, but, but
Well, there actually is no town engineer. There's an engineering manager.
There's a town engineer.
Is there?
Yeah.
I thought it was an engineering manager.
No.
In, in the charters.
Yeah, in the charter.
I don't believe we have one, then. You have an engineer.
Oh, yes. Absolutely, absolutely, Mr. Hurley.
Hurley is an engineering manager.
Town engineer. This is, I think that's official title. Anyway.
No, no, I'm glad to hear that.
Just, so, listen, I'm, I'm an engineer, but I'm not a professional engineer. So should the Department of Public Works Director be an engineer? Absolutely. But does he have to be a professional engineer? There's a big difference between engineer and professional engineer, right? So we, you know, we were counseled by more than a couple of people, saying that, you know how hard it is to find a professional engineer? Our, our current Department of Public Works Director, for how long? Six years? He's been? How long's Bucky been in the role?
Yeah, six.
At least six years. It's not a PE, not a PE. And, and just my personal opinion, has done a really good job. That Department of Public Works Director has, listen, old Board of Finance guy here, I'd rather have a DPW Director who can speak to me about money and how I'm going to run the department, and how I'm going to pave roads and do all this stuff, more important than knowing that, like Bill Hurley can spit off equations like, like nobody's business, like how, how much load this, 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 bridge has to take and stuff like that. I'd much rather have someone with, with that kind of knowledge that, that Mr. Marsilio has, than default to a professional engineer that might not have those skills set. So I'm glad you brought that up, because that is definitely something I want to make sure of.
Can I add something?
Of course, Ms. Ewing.
I think you asked that the, the Department of Public Works person works with the engineer. And also, it was required sometimes because of risk management. I thought that was an interesting point that was made at our meetings.
Oh, about the risk management, yeah.
Because it's required on certain applications that you have a town engineer involved.
Right. Absolutely. Any other comments? Okay. And then your third point about the liaison, you can thank Commissioner Hoag over there for that. She lobbied for that, and we, we, we did, you know, we, we did debate that, and I think that's a really, really good addition as well. So thank you for that. Appreciate you bringing in a positive note there, too.
And there was a slight, correct me if I'm wrong, Chair, but there was a slight, like, revision in the language, which made essentially the town engineer the chief technical
Yes, yes.
officer, which is like
Right.
the DPW Director as a manager of operations. There was some language revision, and that was, I thought that was really important. And Bucky made a, a long presentation about how in modern day, especially in large towns like ours, that there's such a managerial responsibility. In, in, in prior days, and in smaller towns, a town engineer can easily be a DPW Director. But when you have, and he quoted the numbers But when you have, and he quoted the numbers, I'm sorry, I don't have them in front of me, X amount of employees, X amount of departments, X amount of oversight. We thought, or at least I thought, I won't speak for anyone else, that it was important that we had the qualifications of an expert manager in that position. And then if he needed to lean on someone for, well, if he has a PE, great. Then he probably doesn't need to lean. But if he doesn't and he needs to lean on a PE, he has the town engineer and that role is defined as the chief technical, uh, officer and, and requires, I believe, a PE.
Question for clarification. Was there any discussion about having then softer language that would not have mandated the PE, but a PE license preferred? Because when I read the job.
It is, and the job description.
I thought I read the job description online. I might have missed it and the town that's currently posted, and it does not mention that at all.
I might not be. We got a testimony from the Human Resources Manager and she, I believe she said that that will be, will likely be incorporated into the.
I cannot vouch that all the job descriptions, oh, well, first.
It's possible that you read an old job description, but we are just, we've just posted recently.
That's the one I was sent to me.
I believe we are favoring yeast in that and we, we, we have gotten that he is one of the applicants. So that would definitely weigh, you know, in, in their favor, sure.
That's great.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. See, that's the part of the charter you didn't get to yet. You done your homework. You come here, we wouldn't have been having this discussion. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Would anyone else like to give public comment? Judy's been here through the whole, I forgot to mention Judy Ewing here through our whole process. Much, much appreciated you being here and, and helping us out.
I brought these notes so you wouldn't have to write notes.
Thank you. Ah, thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
No.
Your message. I had left computer for a while, so I couldn't send a message. It was supposed to go to Eric, I guess. One of the, um, my name is Judy Ewing, 98 Saskatoon Terrace. Well, I noticed in the, um, section on the Chief Operating Officer, there was a redundancy. Twice it mentioned that the first selectman could remove person without us. It was in the first section, session, sentence and in the last sentence. But when you rewrite your final draft, you have one.
Okay.
I had trouble. Yes, this is my seventh charter revision experience. I served on two.
Sure.
Good shirt.
I think so.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Happy Law Day. That's sitting.
Ms. Ewing?
Sorry. I sent it to you. Not here. I'll give you the reference at some point. Yes, um, I start off Happy Law Day 2025. This is a very appropriate day to be reflecting on your duty as an act member of the 2025 CRC. As a frequent observer in person and by video, I would like to congratulate you. Thank you for your important contribution to the town of Fairfield for your efforts to update 2006 town charter. My one regret is that you chose to overlook some of the good suggestions of the 2022 CRC. Another is that once again, we are faced with a lengthy document that we will need, that will need a table of contents and a cross-referencing index to make it more user-friendly. Because you can't just open it up, find what you're looking for. Have to have guidance. The added length of this new charter, because the last one was about 53 pages, this one's closer to 66 pages. The added length probably couldn't have been avoided because of the several sections that needed to be totally rewritten to bring current practices up to date. And to that I say, well done. I was really pleased to meet some of the newer folks that are now department heads and, and part of our town. I didn't know them before. I started all this in 19, say 19, uh, no, a year was, oh, 14, uh, 70, 71. I started on the RTM. And most of those people are not here anymore. I didn't know the newer people. I think you could easily lose pages 66 and 67, the appendix, which appears at the end of 2006 charter. That is no longer needed. And it should do with the transition of the Board of Education.
It's gone.
For your term, what?
It's gone.
It's gone?
Yep.
I printed that out on mine.
I think you printed the change, the change.
The red line maybe?
The red line.
If you print the red line, it appears.
It's gone.
It's gone.
It's gone. Oh, oh, I see. Okay, I see what you mean now. Thank you. Realize that. Anyway, my suggestion was that you could avoid burning it if you didn't want to by adding some language at the end of section 8.2 Board of Education to simply state that starting in 2007, the board shall elect five candidates for a four-year term. And she'll elect four candidates in the following municipal election for a four-year term, alternating in each subsequent election in order to maintain a nine-member board. It's kind of lonely at some of your meetings because in 2022, there were a lot of people from the RTM that came for various reasons. So then I had, it's unfortunate the RTM leadership was not available to participate. I spoke to several of them during your meetings in, in your deliberations this time around because of the limitations due to working on various ordinances, their ordinances and their own rules to regulate during the busy budget season. Resources information was primarily the list of the sense of the body motions that appeared in the minutes without much context or hint of the proposed changes in language. The RTM leadership had quite a bit to say about their legislative duties in 2022, especially in Article 2 and RFR 4. For example, on page nine of the 2006 charter, 2.6 Procedures for the RTM Elections A states the following. The voting districts for the election of the RTM shall be established by ordinance adopted by the RTM. Therefore, unless and until this CRC removes this responsibility from the RTM, the CRC can revise the way the RTM does their work to achieve this goal. Move the population deviation from the largest to the smallest voting districts, which was one of your proposals. I spoke to the registrar of voters recently about the proposed change in the population deviation. 2006 charter states that it shall not exceed 10% from district to district regarding population. The new language reads, shall be less than 10%. He said he was not aware of it, that he hadn't been following your work. His job includes assisting, assisting the RTM with a reapportionment and will do what the RTM committees ask him to do insofar as it meets the requirements of the last sentence of 2.6A2, which states, to the extent practicable within the constraints of this charter and the state assembly district redistricting, shall provide for districts that are located in only one assembly district. And this caveat was proposed by Attorney Richard Saxon in 19, in the 1992 charter revision. It was approved by the town. As I would, as Attorney Bushbaum said, you could use a different deviation. But what the registrar of voters is saying, as long as it fits this other portion, which was added in 1992, so that you don't cross too many different assembly district lines and various local districts. Because every time you do that, he has to find a new polling place. And there are only about 10 polling places in town with handicapped accessible and enough parking for the public to participate. Therefore, okay, okay, I wrote. In 2002, the RTM leadership asked for, but was not successful in obtaining the right to hire its own council if desired. The 2025 charter revision commission agreed that the RTM should have the right to do that. I, I couldn't find it. I don't know where it was located, so.
It's in there.
Contact Karen Lacher sometime to, yeah, I get it. Located, but I couldn't find it in the RTM section. And maybe it's within the, in the law section, the legal section. I know there was some discussion with the town attorney how this would be funded. Another 2022 proposal, see pages 74 and 75. Section 8.14.3 Ethics Commission was made to, proposal was made to ensure that Ethics Commission could continue to meet uninterrupted to fill a two-term vacancy starting on April 1st. So that the Board of Selectmen and the RTM approval process would be completed before the August recess. I mentioned this one or two times at the meetings. As you may recall, the prize number Ethics Commission requires a quorum of four members present and voting to carry on business. Because some of the vacancies were filled in July. The character says now, the RT, the RTM does not meet in August. So some of the, um, the approval process could not occur over the summer. When fall came, the mission could not operate until the approval process took place. My suggestion is if you could possibly include this, I think it would be really good. So I'm going, we urge you to make, to consider making this last minute change if you can possibly do that. I thought you were going to include in the charter, the organizational chart of the town. As it was mentioned.
No, we, we, I took an action to, um, there's a couple of actions that I took that we will, we will separately, uh, deliver to the first selectman and the Board of Selectmen. And one of them was that we should have an organizational chart. It was never going to be included in here. It was a separate item. Selectmen verbal will get a list from me of, uh, recommendations.
You have any questions with me? Actually, you did a great job. Thank you. I'm so glad to meet all of you.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Ms. Ewing. So, um, I just want to address a couple of your points. Uh, one, I'm assuming the two things at the end of your document are the, are the good suggestions of the 2022 revision that we overlooked? Or is there other?
No, I didn't, I didn't outline them because I was going to go through the whole thing for 2022 and list a whole bunch of stuff, but I ran out of time. I was on computer issues.
There's, um.
But this one was, the one of the Ethics Commission was one of the suggestions.
Okay. So listen, the 2022 Charter Revision Commission, uh, did do a lot of good work. Our, our first selectman asked us to use that as the base document. And after review, we thought that it was better to start with as, as our, is our commissioner made it very clear, there's only one charter, right? And it's in 2006, right? And that's what we used as the base document. So I'm not minimizing the work of the 2022 Charter Revision Commission. I think they did good work. Um, I think there are things on here that, that we found that they didn't find and, and there's probably a couple we missed, you know? So, um, just leave it at that. You said it's unfortunate RTM leadership was not available. I, I will say that, um, um, RTM leadership was involved. Ms. Spolier, who I see is on our, um, online today, and Ms. Zesima, both made, um, multiple comments. Both are either moderators today or past moderators, right?
Ms. Spolier is the moderator.
Ms. Spolier is the current moderator.
I tried to get somebody to come to the meetings because the discussion in 2022 was so lively that there's a lot going on there.
Our discussions weren't lively enough for you, Judy.
They weren't lively enough.
They weren't lively enough.
See me falling off my chair.
We had a, we had a, you know, first selectman put us in a, put us in a tight box and we, and, and, and we finished it up, right? But, um, I think our discussions were lively and, um, and Ms. Spolier and Ms. Zesma are both online. I hope they can comment to this, but, um, I got the feeling from many, many RTM people, RTM members, who I spoke to directly, that they spent some time watching our meetings. Well, we have one right here. She was at all of them, uh, spent a lot of time, uh, reading the document and, um, and making comments, uh, through, through in the 24 seven, you know, website, so.
See, they were asking me after each meeting, what were the things that were decided? And all I could tell them was the sense of the body.
Yeah, and that's my next point. You know, um, I adopted early on process of sensitive body votes. And every meeting, when we changed one word of the charter, I made a, or, or one of the other commissioners made a sensitive body motion, which means that, um, we, we specifically said, I want to delete the words, you know, A, B, C, D, and replace them with F, G, H, I. So when you say that there was only hint of proposed changes, we were, we were very, very specific.
I knew what they were, but I didn't want to bother to type them all out and send them out to people.
Well, that's again, our, the website, 24 hours a day. I could go on the website right now and I could pull up every agenda, every meeting minutes, everything that Prue, Prue O'Brien did a great job of keeping up with our meeting minutes. And, and yes, thank you, Prue.
Thank you, Prue.
Eric's lists, but I couldn't read them because they're too small.
And, and. And, and there's video. Yes, please, please, Commissioner.
Part, part of the, part of the process, Ms. Ewing, that you have to appreciate is the inputs as they came in, not only did he be categorized, right? And it'd be subject matter so we could relate them back to the charter. And I think Commissioner Tresch did an unbelievable job, I call it, keeping it close. Right? So, so when you see the sense of the body votes, what, what I think we tried to do when we saw a substantive change, we didn't want a wholesale change occurring commission having a say in it. So we, if you wanted to articulate all the various changes, all you needed to do was read the minutes. And when the charter came out, you follow the charter changes. That's the right way to do it.
Yeah.
Because everybody should be doing their homework, not just you.
Yeah, that's, that's a great.
I didn't want to be the one that had to do all the work.
Well, in, in. To the extent that you were doing it, that's wonderful.
I understood it.
That's wonderful that you're doing it, but candidly.
Oh, sorry.
The pro, the process that was just kind of outlined was based on that, on those suppositions.
Commissioner Wackerman?
I think also the RTM leadership was more involved back in the 2022 one because there were some very dramatic changes to the RTM that were proposed. So in this case, I don't think we had, you know, big governmental changes we were trying to make. So we did get, as, as the chairman said, we did get comments, but I think that's one reason you didn't see quite the, the discussion that there was a few years ago.
Yeah, very good point. The, the other point I want to make about the sensitive body votes is, um, uh, I did not follow the 2022 Charter Revision Commission meetings in detail, but I was watching them near the end. And I had a sense that they struggled. What did we say on section five? I did not want to be that guy. And the last week saying, what did we say in section five? I didn't want to rely on my other six commissioners to remember what we did. So every week, and it was painful, I'm sure everyone felt it was painful listening to me. And Prue had to record them every time, so she even, she knows the pain better than anybody. I wanted to make sure that we memorialized it right away. And even if we were a couple of words off, we got, we were close enough, you know, so.
Wasn't a good idea, no. I understood, but I didn't want to be the one to have to explain it to everybody.
Got it. Excellent. Any other public comment? Okay.
Good job. Well done.
Oh, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Oh, please, taxpayer, taxpayer Gerber, yes, make sure you fill in your address and, uh.
Please identify yourself. Bill Gerber, uh, I'm not going to comment on the charter. I don't, not sure it's appropriate because I will have a chance to do that. But I, I do just want to say, you know, I'm so thrilled with the way this turned out. I feel like so much pride as a, it's like the creators of the A-Team, you know, how they must have felt when. It was a hit show. Like, I, I felt like we picked like great people and watching this group gel. I mean, it is the A-Team and Chris is definitely Mr. T. Eric, you're Murdoch. Jerry is George Papard. But, um, everyone brought.
Jerry's the good looking one.
Daniel's Templeton and Triple A. I don't know, I'm too old for you, you guys probably never watched it, but, um, the, um, you all brought a lot to the table. I, I was surprised that you didn't go with the two thousand and twenty-two, um, version, uh, because I thought it might be easier. But reading the final result, I, I, I think you made the right decision. It's really easy to read. Like, I got through it really quickly. Um, and I appreciate that you didn't try to turn the world upside down. I think there would be a lot more people here today commenting if you were. You know, I think if we're going to, I don't think what they did the last time around was, was silly in trying to change the form of government. But I think the way they went about it was not practical. If you're going to change the form of government. We probably needed five years to like educational process where we have speakers come in and people will get used to certain concepts that all have to be proven out. Because we have a very intelligent population here. Um, a lot of people have gotten really used to the, the participatory, uh, form of government that we have. And to just switch that to a mayor, uh, town council model will require proving it out to a lot of people. And I, my, I wasn't convinced. Um, last time around, I, I know. A lot, there's, there are strong arguments for it, but I do enjoy going to RTM meetings and seeing forty people who all. Get out there and, and, and talk to their constituents. It, we do have a pretty well-informed. Population. So I appreciate that you didn't do that. Thank you. Um, really, that's all I want to say. I just want to thank you for. Your great work and, you know, you really did pull it together. Um, it was just an amazing thing to watch. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to comment on, on, um, the first selectman's, uh, comment on changing government. We, we did talk about that in one of our meetings, you know, we, you know, the first selectman asked us, you know, in a guiding way, please don't do this. But, but there were a lot of things that people asked us to do that, you know, or said not to do that we, that we, you know, we discussed anyway, right? Um, and one of the conclusions we came to is, listen, if. I'm not saying that at some point the change of government, the change, the, the change, that our government needs to change, right? But we did come to the conclusion that when this happens the next time. You're going to need like a one-year really media campaign. You've got to make, you've got to get people to buy in. You have to understand what that means for the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finances, the Board of Education, the RTM. It's a big change. So to think that in, well, how long have we been doing this? Five, seven months, eight months? To think we could do a form of government change is really, is really quite silly, right? So, but we did have that. We did have that conversation. I also forgot to one, address one thing from, um, Ms. Ewing. This document will have a table of contents and will have a glossary.
And will have what?
Glossary or whatever, what's at the end, an index. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we just, um, um, we're. We just, we didn't have it in there because of, you know, it's going to be in there. It has to be in there. It's one of the things I mandated when I asked, when I asked, um. Our, our town attorney, who's helping us to get the administrative work done, I said, you have to have a table of contents. Has to have a table of contents. It is hard enough, it's hard enough to navigate this thing with a table of contents. Okay. No other town comment in.
Online.
I'm gonna go, yeah, I'm, I'm heading there. Okay, online. I can barely see you all, but I'm gonna start with up top, which I believe is Ms. Spolier. Did Marcy raise her? I think you're on mute, Marcy.
Oh, there it goes. They were, they finally allowed me. Hi there.
Thank you.
Hello, um, hi, everyone. My name is Marcy Spolier. I live at one-ten Brookridge Avenue and I'm the moderator of the RTM. And I just want to say that, um, today I don't speak for anyone else with my comments, but I do speak from my experience of being on the RTM. For almost eight years and being moderator for almost two years. This isn't the first time that I've spoken or, um. Written questions or comments on this topic. I, I have been engaged throughout the process. That's the benefits, actually, of video. Um, you can watch the meetings at any time on replay and I find that, uh, uh, RTM meetings as well, we don't see the engagement we saw. Six or eight years ago, um, because I'm sure people are watching us on fair TV or after hours. But I do want to thank everybody, um, who's committed to this. I know it's a big effort and so I thank all the commissioners. I have a few comments and again, I apologize if some of them are in question format. I know that you might not answer them immediately. But they're meant as comments. Um, my first comments are regarding the legal counsel for the RTM. I thank you for providing the RTM with the ability to retain our independent legal counsel. I think this is a positive change. However, I'm concerned with how the implementation of that will work. Who on the RTM has the ability to decide on the independent legal counsel? And when it is needed? Is it the moderator of the RTM, the majority and minority leaders, the sponsors of an ordinance or a resolution? Or any member of the RTM? Can we retain the independent legal counsel, counsel from anywhere? Or does it have to be someone who already has negotiated a rate with the town? Will the RTM have a budget for legal expenses or will they continue to be housed within the legal budget of the town? Can we have two legal opinions on the same topic? So those are my legal concerns, um, as far as the lawyer, um, and legal counsel. My second concerns are, um, the charter states we may dispense of the regular RTM meeting. If there's no business to be acted on. Do we have to dispense of the regular meeting if there is no business to be voted on? Can we hold a regular meeting without voting items? For example, ordinances being held on the agenda or commission presentations. Um, and while I'm on the topic of regular meetings, um, Judy, we do have August meetings. At least in my tenure, we do, we do set them up and we only cancel if there's no voting items on the agenda. So those are my concerns on the, uh, if we have to dispense of the regular meeting if there's no voting items, because there's other business. They just might not be voting business. Also, I thank you for changing the wording of selectmen to select persons, but I would also ask that you change the wording of chairman to chairpersons. Uh, several times throughout the, um, charter. Another item, um, only the RTM's regular and special meetings are defined. What about other meetings such as our joint committee presentations? Those are meetings by FOIA and they're not defined anywhere. Under Article Four Legislative Branch under Meetings, it says, the notice shall specify the purposes for which this meeting is to be held. Which shall include any business of which the town clerk has been notified by the first select person. Chairman of the Board of Finance or the moderator. Or which may be proposed in an electors or RTM members petition. When it says electors or RTM members petition, it is confusing. And I'm not sure if that means in reference to the, um, the paragraph up above. When they talk about petitions or if that means that any member, uh, any elector of the town or any member of the RTM could put something on the agenda of the RTM. Moving on, I'm also assuming that, um. There's no way to change our organizational meeting of the RTM from the fourth Monday in November. It's unfortunate that this is a holiday week and often falls on the same day as the swearing in. I believe you may have changed the swearing in ceremony, but. It does prevent us from holding a committee meeting on the third Monday of November in an election year, which could prevent the communication of information on voting items. It is especially difficult not having a committee presentation with new members being on boarded and expected to vote at their first meeting. Last year, for example, I think we had eighteen items on our November committee meeting. It was not an election year, but if it had been an election year, none of that could have been discussed on the third Monday of November. And it would have all had to be discussed on the fourth Monday, which is the first vote, first meeting for all newbies. And it's, it's really overwhelming for them. Um, so it kind of really puts us in a, in a. Bad situation. And then, um. Another thing is the town clerk, um, in the, in the charter. Says, it says should act as the clerk of all our meetings. Again, I think the definition of RTM meetings needs to be expanded to include either committee presentations or other meetings. Currently, we do not have the town clerk attend our third, um, or committee, committee presentations. And so, um. That, that's not occurring right now. And I think that's all the comments I have for now. I just want to thank again everyone for your dedication, um, to these charter revisions. And I appreciate you taking my comments into consideration. Thank you.
So Ms. Spolier.
Yes.
I have to ask the question. This is our final night. You've had this, you've had the charter before you for the last fifteen years. Why was there no inputs?
I did. On the first meeting, I definitely inputted on the, I definitely inputted on the date of the organizational meeting. I, I think my comments are in there from like way at the beginning, from the first hearing.
Changed that, but a lot of this other stuff, a lot of the stuff you're mentioning, we didn't even touch.
Some of it, if I may, is, is comments on things we have changed, like adding the lawyer for the.
So the legal counsel, I understand, but I mean, I don't know that we can, we can, I don't know how, how deep we want to go into, you know? I don't know.
I just don't know, like when I. A lot of, a lot of my comments come from experiences. And when you go and you look back and you have to interpret the charter. As a non-lawyer or as a member of the body. I just don't know, when I look at the, the legal counsel comment in there, I, I don't know how that would be interpreted by. Any member of the body, like I, I. I don't know how they would proceed with that. And that, that wasn't in there. Um, you know, I mean, it was discussed, obviously, it's been discussed many times, but it wasn't, it wasn't written in there until, you know, recently.
Commissioner McGinnery.
I, I think our goal was to empower the RTM to retain counsel. Uh, having given the RTM the power to retain counsel. With you as the moderator, I think it's for you to now organize and direct the RTM. In the process of how that will occur. Whether it's by majority vote or whatever. Uh, I, I think the goal we had and the request we had. Was to empower. And, and that was the simple thing that we did. The other question that you had that caught my attention was. About regular meetings and, um. Whether or not they would be suspended or however you phrased your question. I think as you read the, the issue. It was, you may suspend. So if the word may is there, that means you can suspend it or you can hold it. So the word defines within the language what your, um, choices are. So you can have a meeting.
Great. Um, yeah, so definitely like if, if you guys want to leave. The town attorney in like that, that's something we will need to address in our rules to regulate, I believe, and something we can address.
Commissioner Wackerman?
I do, it did, it did make me wonder though, when you asked that, if, um. Who has the authority to ask for funding? Say, um. You know, we come up with our own system and the moderator asks, if, if it's not in the charter or something, how, how does the town say, yes, okay, this. We, we allow you to hire this lawyer with no, no restrictions or anything and here's the money. Like, is there some? You know, some way, I'm probably not articulating this clearly, but should there be something that, that triggers the ability to do this that is in the charter? I don't know.
Yeah, it's, um, I mean, we, we did have this discussion, all right? There are, there are other. My experience on the Board of Finance, when someone wanted to retain legal counsel that didn't have a legal counsel budget. They had to come before the Board of Finance and money had to be moved from legal budget to. Whatever budget, whatever department they were in, right? So, I mean, I, I would assume that would be the process. Uh, I, I think it would, it should be at the control or at least the overview of the town attorney. To administrate the.
Sometimes you need another lawyer because.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not saying that's, that, that the legal counsel is the town attorney. I'm saying, I think, you know, the town attorney has a legal budget. So if the RTM comes tomorrow and says, oh, I think we need legal, legal counsel for this issue. The town attorney could say, oh, we've got budget to handle that. We think that's going to be five thousand dollars again.
Just a suggestion, why doesn't the RTM in there, in a very good counsel, just make it an ordinance? They could.
That, that is an option, yeah.
You do have the power to do that.
Well, maybe we can manage it in the rules to regulate, as long as somebody, you know.
Yeah.
You, you do, you do have the power. RTM does have the power to create ordinances. You could create an ordinance that runs, that suggests that.
That is, that is a true statement, yeah. If there are specific change, so at this point in our, in our, uh, process, Ms. Spolier, if there are specific changes you'd like to see. If you could articulate them through the website. You know, uh, we, we would, we definitely entertain them that way because, uh, we're going to meet on. Uh, a week from today to go through any final changes. And, um, yours seemed like there could be. Uh, you sound like you have some very specific changes that we might want to incorporate.
Okay, so you want, you want me to send them again through the website even though I just articulated them at the public hearing?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Just so we, just so there's no ambiguity there. Okay. Yes, uh, let's see. Ms. Zesima. You're on mute if you're speaking.
Yeah, I, I had the same problem being unable to unmute myself. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to say I can't express enough my gratitude for the work this group is doing. I want to publicly thank Judy Ewing for, um, for attendance and for trying to keep me up to date as other matters. Occupied my time way more than I would have liked. During this process, including the rules to regulate process. You, you know, Moderator Spolier, you know, very. I think, uh, capably, um, conveyed some concerns and some questions. I have, I have one comment and one question. I understand this is not a Q and A, so I can just leave the question open. Um, and I'll, I'll lead with that. The ten percent variance, um, in the district. And again, I apologize for not having attended enough meetings to refer that discussion in full. That's a statutory requirement. And the less than is, I assume, for any circumstance in which you can't achieve a perfect ten percent. Calculations. I guess I just want to make sure that this is not allowing that to drop. By any significant amount for, for, you know, no reason other than allowing maps to be drawn. Kind of without that particular requirement in place. So that's, that's one comment. As far as one of the issues, uh. Moderator Spolier brought up, I like the idea, you know, in, in. The aggregate, I guess, of, of the RTM having their own. Authority to hire an attorney, it would be understood other than the town attorney. And I think this, maybe Commissioner, um, Wackerman can confirm this. I think it's probably best to address. I think it's probably best to address my concern. In the rules to regulate, but you know, there's need to be some. Guidelines, I think, within that process. Because I can imagine that there could be some politically motivated uses of a third party attorney. Um that there need to be some. I think. Standards by which, you know. It have to be met in order to say, hey, we're not gonna use the town attorney, we want somebody else. For what reason? Is it to create an ordinance? Is it to? You know, settle a dispute of some other um. Subject or topic or within our. Um legislative authority. So I I think. It and I would, I would like for Commissioner um Wackerman to weigh in on that. I think we should have some structure around that. And perhaps it does belong in the rules to regulate.
Commissioner Wackerman, please, yes.
I think you're right, I think that the rules to regulate certainly are an important place for them um. And that, and maybe that will solve the problem. I don't, I really don't know if uh we can, if we should have anything in um a townwide. Document like the charter that's more specific. But I think certainly the rules to regulate, we'll talk about that in the next rules to regulate meeting.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, and if there is, um, Mr. Chairman, if there is any. Very quick explanation of that ten percent variance issue, um I would appreciate it, maybe, you know, the public would benefit from that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, sure, um, first of, let me let me comment on the rules to regulate. Yeah, I I think that's an excellent idea. Because as Commissioner McHenry was was, you know, articulated, I think, very well. Uh, we just wanted to give you the option to be able to have legal counsel. It is, it was not intended to get into the hairy details of what that meant. Um, I, now, I thought that included the town attorney. Um, you know, I don't think that's necessarily, I don't think that language. Excludes a town attorney for being the legal counsel. Um, I don't think it also means that it has to be the town attorney, right? So I think the rules to regulate will be very important. Because, yes, we can't have every member, every meeting say, I don't like that, let's call an attorney. Our our attorney bills will be, you know, will be through the roof, so. Ag- I agree with that. That ten percent, maybe Commissioner Treschek can help me. That was ma- that was a requested change by someone and I don't remember who it was.
By Attorney Bushbaum, I'm trying to go back and find the reference, but that was, that was recommended specifically from the attorney.
Our CRC attorney made that recommendation, uh Ms. Zesema, and um.
So the the Right to Vote Act is a. It was promulgated in the sixties, it's a federal law. We do have. A Connecticut adoption of that, so she's correct, there is a Connecticut law as well. More importantly, it's a federal law and it also contains. Uh requirements regarding the demographics in each district, I mean, I don't, I don't. The revision is. Went from not to exceed shall be less than. So, you don't. It's not violative of the federal. If you're making it more restrictive.
Ten percent or less.
And you're actually allowed pursuant to the federal law to go over by some. By some level as well, but I think. It's an important law and this, you know, being conservative and careful is a is a good thing. And that's what we did, we made it even more. Careful, but regardless, you can't, this 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 document couldn't see supersede. Federal statute, so.
It's a guidance document more than anything else. Does that make sense, Ms. uh Zesma?
Yes, I I apologize again for the delay and I'm muting myself. It does, I I very much appreciate that, if I were to have any additional, um, you know, comments or questions, I will um. Submit them as the the chairman has requested and I thank you guys again for your work and for your comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, select person vitality. Think you're still muted, Christine.
Hello, I actually am not here to give public comment because um you will be before the Board of Selectmen, I just wanted to listen. But since I am unmuted in here, I just wanna thank you all for your service and for all of your work on this and look forward to um. Hearing more and if I have any questions before you, before the Board of Selectmen, I will um reach out. So thank you all for your work on this, um. Did a great job.
Appreciate it and thank you very much for your uh, your insightful questions, even though you didn't get your way. We didn't, we didn't do it mean spirited.
She might be used to that on the B O S.
Thank you very much, um, I cannot read. Okay, Marie A.
How do you read that?
I can't read it. Yes, thank you, uh, Marie A, how are you?
Chris, actually, this is Laura Devlin. My address is eighty-five Brett Lane in Fairfield. Um, I am a former state legislator, I am the current chair of the Republican Town Committee. Uh, I wanna thank you guys for the work that you have done and I appreciate the opportunity to have had to provide input earlier. Um, I also wanna thank you for sending me the red line, you know, the links to be able to see the red line version and all of that, so. I did go through it and I have three comments, well, one actually based on the discussion. So, can I take you through those?
Please.
Great, so the first one, which actually I thought Ms. Ewing brought up and also Ms. Zesema brought up. Which is regarding Article Two and that change from the population deviation shall not exceed ten percent. To not be less than ten percent, I thought that was an error. It seems to contradict the goal of equitable representation, so. And I'm not sure if I followed the past discussion. Properly, when you were talking about Attorney Bushbaum's um. Input to this, I I hope what I didn't hear is that you were gonna leave it as is and just follow. State statute, I hope it would be correct.
Try and understand the question.
Yeah, I'm 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 sorry, I'm I'm a little confused as well, um.
So that the change basically would would uh be eliminated. And you would go back to the language of the population deviation shall not exceed ten percent.
Well, currently, it says. Be ten pers- uh, ten percent. Or less. And we made the change to be less than ten percent.
Just says ten percent. It doesn't say ten percent or less, it says ten percent.
That may be a drafting error then, that we, the intent is.
It says shall be less than ten percent.
That.
Shall be less than ten percent.
What is the uh actual paragraph?
See, the entire sentence is um, it's a long sentence.
So it's on page eight?
Two point six A.
Two point six, right?
Two point six A two. After completion of the census of the United States and after reaportment. The state general assembly districts affecting the town, voting districts of the town shall be established by enforcement. Proposed by a committee of the RTM comprised of. An equal number of members from each party such that the population deviation from the largest to the smallest voting district. Shall be less than ten percent, period.
And what it used to say was shall not exceed ten percent.
Correct.
Right, that's correct. So, so it could be nine point nine 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 percent or less now, sort of, it's it's a little bit.
So, yeah, so the difference, yeah, I was just gonna say, so the, the current charter, it could be. Ten point zero 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 and the way we've written it, now it can be nine point nine 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 nine.
So I would just ask that that. Change is not going to lead to sort of any unbalanced districts or. Have any impact on equitable representation. It might seem an insignificant change, I'm not sure it is an insignificant change.
But if anything, it would reduce the difference in population between the districts.
To be more equitable, right?
I would think it would be more equitable, yes, the weights right now.
Diviation would be equitable.
Deviation reduced.
The lower the number, the less deviation.
Register voters' concern was that it would cross assembly district line. If you didn't use the ten percent, which we know.
I I feel like the registrar is worried about getting a polling location, which I think shouldn't be something, it should be considered.
Well, my input does not come at all from the registrar's office and I agree with you that polling locations, which seem to change far more frequently than they should. Uh, should not factor into this, but that is my point, I just want to. Put that on record and let's ensure that we are not going to.
I don't see a difference.
Impact the equitable representation.
Got it.
Alright.
Yes, appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, um, page fifty-three, which is in Article Ten regarding the Ethics Commission. Uh, and I appreciate your preamble tonight uh about your emphasis. On ethics, which I think is really important. Um, one specific comment and then sort of an overall. I guess, input, uh, which might come through, I believe, in ordinance, which is, which is being worked on anyway, but um. Under, uh, let's see. It is Section Ten of fifteen point C, one. A, and we talk about in. Any investigation to determine probable cause, the Ethics Commission shall. Keep all information confidential and share it only on a need to know basis. And what it used to say was shall keep all requests for confidentiality. Consistent with requirements of state law. Um, I think what's really important is that we're not reducing any sort of trust in the Ethics Commission. If it is perceived as less protective of whistleblower blowers. So maybe just clarify safeguards for, you know, complainant's privacy to maintain confidence in the reporting process. The other comment I would have regarding ethics and it is a broader thematic point. Um, is strengthening, uh, I would say comparable to what you would see from a corporate perspective. About conflicts of interest. Uh, you know. Potential financial gain and benefit, uh, there are some very strict. Uh laws, at least in my experience of decades in the corporate world. Um, that make it extremely black and white about conflicts of interest and I don't see that in. The uh public arena, of public office, that it is quite up to that standard. So I offer that to you as well.
There's another Article Ten, uh, Article Eleven, Standards of Conduct. Which describes some of these things. There's an Ethics Commission and Ethics. Ethics portion, and then there's something called Standards of Conduct.
Yeah.
So I, just, just to be clear, Ms. Devlin, are are you saying that we, that we need to bolster the language on the um?
Cross-reference.
Yes.
Last point, I think it's in the US, isn't it?
Absolutely. I would encourage that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, my final point is, actually, let me get back to page thirty-six. And this is Section Nine. Uh, this really didn't make a lot of sense to me. Um, this is the first time that I was seeing this, hang on, I'm almost at thirty-six. So, on page thirty-six, uh, Section Nine point, I believe now it's two-two. The Chief of Police, uh, sec- uh, under A, it says that the Chief of Police may be removed for cause. By the Police Commission and shall serve until removal, retirement, or resignation. That appears to be an ad, don't necessarily have a problem with that. But if you move down to nine point two-three under the Fire Chief. And, and I find this really questionable, the Fire Chief may be removed without cause by the Fire Commission. With approval of the first select person and shall serve until removal, retirement, or resignation. And considering the fact that the administration has put a fire or a Fire Chief on leave. Uh, without telling anyone and there's been no update and now we're paying for two chiefs. It's very suspect to me as to why we would have this discrepancy in terms of termination of cause or without cause. Uh, under both Fire and Police. So, can you actually explain why that was, that change was made?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try to give the overview and I'll let some of the other commissioners who might know a little bit more. If you'll notice, under all of the roles that are, and I wanna make sure that I use the words correctly. All of the roles that are, I think it's. Appointed, not appointed by. All of the officers appointed by the first select person, right? Every one of those roles. Um, never had any, eh, had any um. Um. Any words that that mentioned. Could be removed with cause or without cause, so every one of these roles has been updated to say. Be removed with cause, without cause, or with cause. Now, the Fire, the Fire Chief, sorry, the Police Chief. Help me out, cuz you, I may need you on this one. Um, there's a, I think it's a Police Accountability Act.
Correct.
That that forces us to only be able to remove the the Fire. Sorry, the Police Chief with cause. But not, no such language, state statute language, maybe, and maybe Attorney McCann can help me here. Uh, there's no such language that is in place to to do that for the Fire Chief.
It also that with cause, it has to be by the Police Commission.
Yes, yes, yes.
The Fire doesn't have that requirement and so we. The first elect.
That's exactly right, right.
However, public safety is very different than. The auditor, the Director of Health, uh, any of these other, other positions. Um. So I find it very unusual. That, and in fact, we s- we still have included language here for the Fire Commission. Uh, so it is. You know, that is not removed in terms of the language for the Fire Chief.
So the Fire Chief can be removed by the. Police Commission. Sorry. Please, I said, no, no, the Fire, the Police Chief can be removed by the Police Commission.
Yeah, correct.
Not by the first selectman, not by anyone else. And there has to be cause. Yet the Fire Chief can be removed by the Fire Commission. With the approval of the first selectman, without cause. So, again, one is mandated. And one is not.
So my comment is that I think public safety in general is very different than the other town departments. Um, considering recent actions that have taken place regarding our. I guess, do we call him prior or do we call him current or do we call him? Uh, co-Fire Chief, um. It doesn't, it doesn't seem uh appropriate that this particular language is included. That, I think if the Fire Commission. The Fire Chief may be removed. For cause. By the Fire Commission with approval of the first select person and shall serve until removal. Retirement. Or resignation.
So your, your ask is that we, we change it to with cause?
Correct. So that it is consistent in public safety. Between Fire and Police. Understand the Police Accountability Bill? Went through that quite a bit. Um, but yes.
Yeah, I mean, I I I do understand the tie to public safety and um, since one is mandated. I mean, we, we do have the, well, we can run it by the town attorney for sure, or definitely our attorneys to make sure.
Well, why wouldn't they be consistent? I mean, you're, you're citing the fact that it's law that requires. The Police Chief would only be removed for cause. Why would we not have that same consistency with the Fire Chief?
Don't we have public safety for a building inspector? Don't we have public safety from sewer and 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 waste management inspectors? We have public safety associated with every department of this town. Because the people of the town rely upon the administration of these departments. So you could use as a precursor to this issue, public safety. The issue is, everybody but the Police Commissioner, uh, the Chief of Police. Uh, is subject to removal without cause. And the po- and the Chief of Police. He's governed by statute. So the distinction is one derived from statute. Everybody else serves in the same manner and everybody protects the public safety.
I appreciate that comment. I appreciate that comment. You know, they're not responsible for saving lives or, you know, putting lives at risk. Um, their own lives at risk. So perhaps we could get a legal opinion on that. Because, you know, when I think back to the Police Accountability Bill, and I'd have to go back through that language in great detail, I don't recall that it actually talks about terminating a chief. There's lots of restrictions that are certainly put on what police can and cannot do, or how they have to do things. But, um, let's, can we get a legal opinion?
Uh, yes, we certainly can do that. Yeah, Ms. Whack, uh, Commissioner Whackerman.
Um, yeah, I'll step right in. Um, I think it's important to point out that we, we had sort of a general discussion where we agreed that wherever the First Selectman has appointed someone, we were going to say that the First Selectman could remove that person. Um, without cause. So that was our basic, our baseline decision. And then we went through it, we found the only exception was the Police Commission.
And the Town Attorneys.
Uh, and the Town Attorney. So I think, I mean, I, I think we can, I think an opinion in a way, I don't think is as, um, unless we decide that there's some kind of reason to make the Fire Department an exception. I think that what we did was, you know, was legal and permissible and follows our goal, our general goal of.
I, I, I think you're correct. I mean, in, 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 in that general overview that we tried to, to, to. We started with, okay, everybody should be, could be fired without cause. And then we, when we backed off, we said, oh, hold on, wait a minute, here, here are the exceptions. The Fire Chief did not fall out as an exception, right? So, so it did, it did follow a process, which is a good point, right? Is, is the, I think what, what, um, uh, what Ms. Devlin is saying is, is there some other overarching public safety thing that overrules that? I mean, I think, well, listen, we, we will certainly take it to the Town Attorney, Ms. Devlin, for sure. Appreciate that comment.
Okay, that's great, because it likely is not in the Police Accountability Bill. I know you can't get rid of a Police Commission. You might have wanted to get rid of a Fire Commission, but why there would be a discrepancy between eliminating a Fire versus Police Chief for cause, um, I would, I would love to hear that, uh, feedback. Um, the last thing I would just add is I applaud you including legal counsel for the RTM. And I believe it was Ms. Zesima who made a comment, you know, of concern that, um, you know, it not be politicized, and I couldn't agree with that more. So, uh, I think that's great, and, you know, there may be some things to work out, but I think that was a positive move.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Devlin, if you could, um, if you could, uh, I want to make sure that I capture your comments on the ethics, uh, the, the, your change on ethics. If you can articulate that through our website, just give a quick overview of what you're looking to change, that would be, that would be really great. Because I know you wanted to add something.
So that you have it on record, I will just provide, uh, comments that I've offered you this evening. That would be great. And then I know that you will get a legal opinion. Is that, like, how does that get back to me? Is that on the onus on me that I need to go track what you guys are doing, or does somebody actually respond to that request, which would be lovely?
I, I'll, I'd be happy to respond to you directly in that regard.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thanks so much for all of your work.
Chris, yeah, sorry, Commissioner McCann.
Um, Connecticut General Statute seven dash two seventy-eight, um, requires a, a just cause provision for Chiefs of Police. No active head of any police department of any town, city, or borough shall be dismissed unless there is a showing of just cause by the authority having the power of dismissal. Such person, and such person has been given notice in writing in the specific grounds for dismissal and an opportunity to be heard in his own defense. His or her own defense.
Okay, so that's the, that's the language that, that makes it the four cause.
For the, for, for the.
Absolutely.
That would be great language for Fire, too.
We can talk about it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely, you know, that's, we, we have a meeting, um, just so you know, on May eighth, and this will be one of our sweep-up topics.
Fabulous.
Wonderful. Anything else, Ms. Devlin?
No, that's all I have for you this evening. Again, thank you for your work.
Appreciate it. Thank you for, thank you for taking a look.
Yep, already. Have a good night.
Ms. Griffin.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, is it my turn?
Your under-over is closed.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, so I have a, um, a few comments to make. Sorry, I'm just, I just reviewed the document today. So I apologize if you've either already talked about it or you've addressed some of these issues. Um, just a couple of things I wanted to bring up. Um, I believe the Conservation Commission, um, by state statute is appointed by the CEO or the First Selectman. Um, I think you changed it to the Board of Selectmen, maybe with the RTM. I would just check, um, with the attorney on that. Because I believe seven dash three, one, three, one of the statutes, um, says that it's the CEO who does that. Um, another one was, I believe, the building official also, according to state statute, is a four-year term. It looked like maybe you took that out. Um, I think that's in twenty-nine dash two sixty. Um, and I believe for the Health Director, at least what I saw in the statutes today is what their term was not to exceed three years.
What was the last one? Oh, yeah, you gotta slow down a little bit.
Sorry, that, the Health Director, I believe, is not to exceed, um, three years. Now, our charter says, um, four, but I quickly Googled them today because I know there was a reason why, you know, they, they had terms in the charter to begin with, and a lot of it had to do with the state statutes.
Is, does Home Rule take in account anything with this, uh?
No, but I feel like we, like Phil did, we, he had on that.
I, I think we did talk about.
I was surprised, I was surprised by that particular opinion. I've, I've agreed with him on ninety-nine percent of all the opinions. But he said that we can supersede statute on those terms. I remember that specific. I was surprised by it, but I, I don't, I'll, I'll defer to him.
Yeah.
We got that comment also from someone on, uh, Tree Warden.
Yeah, yeah, someone said that Tree Warden was bound by two years when we said, when we actually interpreted it as no term limit.
Well, and also the Home Rule in that case.
So maybe for the Conservation Commission, if you're making it more restrictive, then you don't have to follow the statute because it's the Board of Selectmen and not that. I just wanted to point that out. Um, now, one of the other things was, um, it looks like you took section six point two A seven. Um, which had the ability to delegate for the First Selectman to de- delegate such authority as may be necessary to appropriate town officials or the Board of Selectmen or to administrative assistment, assistants whose appointment may be authorized by the RTM. Um, and it looks like you cha- you created a new six point two D. Is that right? That's staffing. Um, and it talks about the First Selectman is entitled to appoint a Chief of Staff and Administrative Assistance or equivalent positions. All assistants and staff appointed by the First Select Person shall serve at the pleasure of the First Select Person. Um, and I think that the intention of six point two A seven, which has been around for a long time, was that whether it's an administrative assistant or not, I think that that term really applied for years and years to the Chief of Staff or any other assistants, um, in administering the town government. Um, and not necessarily to, you know, like, secretarial positions or something like that. Because for a long time, in some, um, towns and whatever, that the top assistant person is an administrative assistant. Um, so I just think, I'm not sure that you needed to change that and make it a new paragraph. I also don't think you need to call out the Chief of Staff if the Chief of Staff is truly an assistant to the First Select Person. And that person can appoint whoever they want and give them whatever titles they want. I just think that specifying, you know, Chief of Staff, Administrative Assistance, and equi- or equivalent positions. And then you say Assistance and Staff. I just, I think it's a lot, and I think you can take six point two A seven and just reduce it to Assistance and take out the word Administrative if you, if you feel that's not right, um, and leave that in there. Um, I don't know why you took out, um, maybe authorized by the RTM, but perhaps you discussed the reasons for um, striking that particular language from that section. I don't know.
Yep, got it.
Yep, and then the only other comment, this is kind of my, my, probably my biggest touch point, and I haven't read the whole charter, so I apologize. I did, um, send a couple of other comments through email, um, is about the, the, um, Chief Operating Officer. And I feel really strongly about that, that, um, that person, if it's going to have the role, that's going to continue across multiple administrations. And that's really what this position, you know, in the last charter revision, they talked a lot about having that position be um, you know, like a CFO or somebody who's just gonna stay, um, uh, gather institutional knowledge be across administrations, be non-political, um, that the, that, that would be a very good position for the town to have. Um, however, in the current role of the CAO last time, the COO this time, it has become, you know, for whatever reasons, it seems to be a very political, um, position. And I think a lot of that is, um, is because the, the, the person is appointed solely by the First Selectman. So I would argue that that COO position perhaps could fall under the assistance of the First, uh, in six point two A seven. If it's truly a person who's assisting with this, and if it's a person who's really going to be the number one person running our town. Um, and when the administration turns over with elections, um, then I feel very strongly that person needs to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen and report to the Board of Selectmen and not to the First Selectmen. Um, the other two things that, um, particularly bothered me about the COO, especially since it is, it's an appointed position and not an elected position. Is that, um, that person is listed as being an ex officio on all boards. Um, and an ex officio on the RTM. And that means that person can make motions, it can, that person can go into executive session. And if you're gonna have that person be appointed solely by the First Selectman and not even by the Board of Selectmen, I really don't think that that's a good idea. I think, you know, the First Selectman and the select, the Board of Selectmen, they're elected positions, they're responsible to the public. Um, to be able to give them the privilege of being able to go into all of those sessions and sit on every single one of those boards. Um, is a huge privilege, but I think it should be left for elected peoples. I really feel like if this is gonna be an appointed position, you need to, um, you know, I, even if it was appointed by the Board of Selectmen, I don't feel it. I know, understand the administrative efficiencies of having that person being in all of those executive sessions and being an ex officio. But I think if you look at many, many other towns, that town administrator or the COO, they sit there at the board, they ask questions. They're very involved, they go get information, they come back, they're very helpful, but they don't have the power that um, an ex officio would have in be, in terms of being involved and also going into executive session. So I do know with the last charter revision, I stood at the polls, as most of you know, I opposed, you know, certainly the single ballot question. But I will say the single thing that bothered most of the voters when I spoke to them at the polls was that in, in the last charter, there were two positions being put in that were appointed solely by the First Selectman at a high dollar value, the very high positions appointed solely by the First Selectman. And people were extremely upset about that, and it was enough to get people to change their vote and vote no on charter. So I'm, I know you're trying to make this pass. Um, I also know you're trying to make it, um, a good thing for our government. But I just think that doing it, what you have written for the authority and the power that that position has in, in this particular draft is just way too much. That's my opinion.
Okay. Yeah, please, I'm gonna comment too, but please, Commissioner Whackerman.
Kathleen, this is just, um, um, mechanical, but we need to have your address for purposes of.
Oh, I'm sorry, fifteen Stony Brook Road.
Also, yeah, and, and, um, um, I would like you to articulate these, the, any specific changes that you're looking for. Please articulate that through the, the website as well. Um, I, I want to comment on the COO. So there was a lot of debate over this. And I specifically invited our current First Selectman and our prior First Select Person. I need to go back one more select. Uh, to, to talk about how important this role is. And both those individuals made a compelling case to me, anyway, that the COO role was important. It should be memorialized here. I was on the fence. Should this be memorialized? Um, and, and could it have remained under the article you, you talked about, under administration? I mean, we talked about Chief of Staff, we memorialized that because we thought that was important. But, um, this COO role, what, whatever it may be for each individual First Select Person, seems to be an important role, and two administrations, two different parties, two different philosophies around the town, if you will, don't agree that it was an important role. That was the basis by which I voted to add it, to add the COO role. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
No, I appreciate that. I think, I think my comment to that would be, um, those were both people who were First Selectmen. And I would think that it would be to their advantage to have that person in the charter and be, you know, not have to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen or go through any interview process. You know, to just be able to hire whoever they want to go into that position. Um, and so I can see why they would both want that, and I don't think it's a political issue. But I do think it's a, it's not a good governance issue. Um, and that's why, if you asked a lot of other people, not to First Select Persons, what they, you know, their opinion of having somebody who's appointed solely by the First Selectman, serves in a high dol- a, a high role, has a lot of responsibility but not to the public, I don't think the public would necessarily agree with, you know, with that. And I, and I hear you operationally why it may make sense to have that, but I just think, I mean, I've listened to board meetings in other towns, I've done a lot of research on town administrators in other towns. Most of them are appointed when there's a Board of Selectmen in an RTM. They're appointed by the Board of Selectmen. If you have a town with mayors or a different, and a city councils and other forms of government, then they tend to be appointed by the mayor or the person who's in charge in those towns. But for the most part, when you have town administrators and positions that are supposed to be non-political positions, then they are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And if this is gonna continue to be a political appointment, which at the moment, it appears from last time and this time, um, I just think it fits under the assistance, and I think you can leave it there. If you're gonna call it out and make it a real position, and I a hundred percent think we should have like a town administrator who sticks across all administrations and who runs the town so that our gut, so our boards of selectmen can come and go, and we have continuity, and we're not starting from scratch every time a new administration comes in. I'm all for that in this town, and I see Wilton and, and Darian and Greenwich, and they've all gone to those models. But those people, for the most part, are not appointed by, solely by the First Selectmen. They're go through the, and they go through the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so we talked about a town administrator, we, we opted not to put that in. No, so, our, Ms. Griffin, are you telling me that if we change, shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, that you're not gonna stand out in November and, and lobby against the revision moving forward?
I, i- if you don't make them ex officios on all the boards and an ex officio on the RTM, okay. I don't, I think ex officios need to be left for elected officials. I really do. Unless it's, you know, like the harbor management, people sitting on Parks and Rec or vice versa, however that works. Like, I can see why they might have roles on other boards when their boards are related to each other. But to give somebody who is not an elected person basically the ability to sit in on executive sessions and be up, be, sit like on your board right now, like, you know, any, and the Selectman can be up there with you, right? They can sit there, they can make motions, they can call questions, they just can't vote. Um, they can go into your executive session. I just think that that's a tremendous amount of power for even somebody who's been appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Well, ex officios can call. I mean, ex officios basically can go to, can go to court, that's right.
They can make, they can make motions.
No.
Uh, according from what I've read, they, they can make a motion, they just can't vote.
I was ex officio to the RTM for sixteen years, and I was never able to make a motion.
Okay, maybe I'm wrong about that, but I read that somewhere off of the Roberts Rule or someplace. But there's just, in other words, what does it mean to be an ex officio, right?
I think it's important, this is just my personal opinion, I think it's important, if do, if we are gonna memorialize this role, and whether it's Board of Selectmen and First Selectmen, which I'll take this up with the Commission, uh, a week from now. Um, I think ex officio is, is important for them to be in, to be in some of these meetings, WPCA especially. I think the WPCA role with this person as ex officio is a very, very important time. I, I really think it is.
I think, I, I mean, and I, I believe there are times that you can invite people into meetings for specific reasons, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. I think you, you know, if it's, if the business at hand is someone who needs to be in there, I believe you can invite them in. But to just say that they can go to anyone. But to just say that they can go to anyone that they want whenever they choose, which is what you're doing by giving them that power. Just don't think it's a good, I personally don't think it's a good idea.
Yes, Miss Urie.
Yes, um, regarding executive sessions, you have to be invited to an executive session.
Not executive session, talking about caucuses.
Well, she was talking about executives.
I was speaking about.
Talking about executive session.
Oh, oh, well, executive sessions, I thought you were talking about caucuses.
No.
If ex officio is a member of the board without voting rights.
Right.
They can go to executive session, you can, you're a member of the board, you don't have to be invited, just the same way any other member.
Hey, you have to be invited to an executive session. With a specific purpose of being there.
Okay, well, we'll take up the first selectman, board of selectmen, I I don't know if we would take up removing the. The um, ex officio, to be perfectly honest with you, so.
They all see the same thing.
Yeah, no, I don't think so. That's the best I can tell you for right now. Anything else, Ms. Griffin?
No, but I only went, you know, that that conversation I had listened to before and I haven't read everything, I just went through like the first two sections and quickly. You know, looked at the conservation, so I will submit other comments as I, I apologize, I got behind and and didn't read the whole red line, but. I will submit them as I find them.
You got, you got a whole week?
I'm working on it, trust me.
I've been working on it for eight months.
Yep, thank you.
Three sixty-five website.
Yes, and 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 and, you know, another plug would be wonderful if every week in the newsletter or someplace was, hey, this is what we're thinking about doing. What do you think? Send your comments our way, in a, in a way that is friendly for people to understand. And say, hey, look, we're, you know, thinking of adding this, if you got any comments on that, here's the language, feel free to email us back. If you're putting it out to us as opposed, you know, a push notification as opposed to asking us to come to the website, find your minutes. You know, and if the minutes, sometimes the minutes have been delayed in getting posted, so it's difficult to read what's going on. So I'm just saying, I think there are ways that you can get it out there better, even your summary would be great to get that summary out.
I'm not gonna have you disparage either Ms. Carpenter, my vice chair, or anyone while putting up minutes. Minutes were put up in a timely fashion, agendas were posted on time and they were voted on by this, by this commission. I was in, I have input in multiple first selectmen uh newsletters, they don't come out every week, they come out every two weeks. Every two weeks, we met. So it was, I didn't really think it was appropriate for me to say, guess what we're taking up next week, that's because we had agendas. And we had, and we had, um, uh, you know, data packages. So I think to to ask a concerned taxpayer to go to a website twenty-four hours a day, any day of the week they'd like. To review absolutely every comment that came in from every taxpayer is not a, you're saying it's a poll, I, I.
No, yeah, I'm not saying that, I just think maybe you could have done a, you know, a survey or something from the beginning and I think maybe, um.
Did do a survey.
Whackerman suggested that at the beginning.
I, uh, we did do a survey, it was called a website.
Okay, I apologize, I must have missed it.
We, we did, I said, you can put any comment you want about this charter on the website twenty-four hours a day. I didn't limit it, didn't limit one word. Okay.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay. I don't see anyone else online, I don't see anyone else coming in the room.
Can I ask a question?
Commissioners, please, yes, anything else?
Will we, will those comments that are on there be saved in the chat or did they disappear when the meeting's gone?
Well, they're nothing important.
Yes, there's, 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 there's just all.
Oh.
There's nothing, uh, no substantive, okay.
You can read them.
There's, I have comments.
She's got a computer.
Kind of.
Okay.
But you can save the chat.
Okay, got it, uh, commissioners, any comments before I call for a motion to adjourn?
Do you want to announce when our next meeting, face anybody?
Sure, our next meeting is May eighth, one week from now, first floor conference room, Independence Hall. We, the agenda will be up tomorrow and we will be taking up the, um, the agenda, oh, sorry, we're taking up the minutes. From the last three meetings, not including this meeting, and we will be discussing all of the comments that all you lovely people gave us this evening. Anything else? All right.
George Pappard moves to adjourn.
I said, George Pappard. Commissioner Pappard, please, I can, a motion to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, Brian.